All right, here we are. It's time for Town Hall meeting number 170. It's October 28th, 2025. And today, we are being joined by Alfred, Ayomi, Kali, Esther, Guillermo, Haley, Sly, Tavvo and Vani. Thanks for joining in. As you can see on the screen and outline of today's agenda. Starting off with a couple of mentions and then we'll have a bit of a recap on BGI 25, focusing on the Unconference and the Hackathon. And after that, we'll have a session on Treasury Insights. And if there's any time remaining after that, there can be room for open topics. And a quick reminder on what the Ambassador Program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of people quite aligned with the mission and vision of SingularityNet and its work building towards beneficial artificial general intelligence. And we do this through a wide range of self-organizing workgroups. We have 21 of them, so if you're interested in helping out, we do have one that suits your talents, your interests, your needs. And yeah, best you can do is hop onto our Discord server. This has a "How to Join" section, which will explain you how to join. Then a couple of mentions. First of all, apologies for starting this call one hour late. It's the half-yearly summertime/winter time change and I actually managed to screw it up myself this time for Town Hall. So yeah, I guess this also comes with a reminder to all workgroups to please have a check on the schedule. Not just for the summertime/winter time thingy, but also every now and then there's still meetings from workgroups that have changed their their meeting interval from, let's say, weekly to bi-weekly or to monthly. Yeah, I think it would be good to have, please have a double check on making sure that everything is set up correctly. And then, yeah, seeing this is the last Tuesday of the month, usually we have the workgroup update session. I guess I can blame BGI and Travels and Winter Time actually for, no, no, no. For, yeah, that's not on today's agenda. I think simplest there would be to suggest doing this next week. Yeah, if there's any objections, then please share them. But I think we should still be having these sessions and yeah, also connected to that after the workgroup updates session to have a workgroup sync and call. And we have been planning these on Mondays lately, but if next week we'll do the update on Tuesdays Town Hall, so that will by definition have to be after Tuesday. I think sorting out the planning for that would make sense to do through the Decisions to Be Made channel, just to not right now dive into five minutes of puzzling out the session slot. But yeah, ideas are welcome there. And then I figured I would give a quick shout out to the Open Governance Call this Thursday, where the topic is going to be potential changes to the consent process. For example, well, the interval could be something. Over time, we've been experimenting and making small changes here and there. But it's starting to look like perhaps we need a bit of a bigger overhaul. And yeah, that will be discussed this Thursday and that's gonna be. This is terrible. I'm inclined to say 14 UTC, but I have this mental note of these meetings being on 13 UTC. That also will need double check for winter time changes.
It is 14:00 and it is that on the calendar as well, so I think that's right.
Thanks. I'm just starting to adapt every planned time slot right now. Cool. Okay, so 14 UTC. And I do think that's it on the mentions portion. A quick check on the room, any short callouts or mentions we should be including here, because feel free to. And if not, yeah, as I said, there might be space at the end of the call for open topics. So if you come to think of anything, feel free to, well, either drop it in the chat or later on, simply bring it up. Cool. Then that brings us to the first main topic being the BGI 25 recap. I figured it would be good to have a bit of focus on the Unconference and the Hackathon. Well, way to start. I only got back yesterday evening. I had some days of being a tourist in Istanbul while I was there and figured I might as well. So I spent the whole day on catching up mostly. Let's see. Can anybody, well, volunteer to take the floor and then give a bit of a recap on the? Well, that's arbitrary, but let's start with the Unconference.
I mean, I can say a little bit, but there's probably other people who can as well. I've started a sort of retrospective doc, which people will see in the Ambassador General channel. And if you were there or if you were part of the planning, please add any thoughts that you have. But overall, I think we did well. I have to say that the sessions were so interesting and stuff came out that I certainly hadn't necessarily expected in the discussions and it felt like it was, I don't know, a couple of people have said to me that it's helped clarify their thinking. You know, when you put together a presentation and you've got to think, well, where actually are we at? And I think that process is really productive, so I think it's been helpful in that sense. But it was a little bit disappointing that we had 100 people register and hardly anyone from outside of our close connections turned up. So I think, you know, from my point of view, I'd definitely do it again, but we'd want to spend some real thought on the publicity and it just felt like it wasn't very joined up, you know? It's like publicity was going on, but it felt like we were kind of in a little backwater. It wasn't, do you know what I mean? It was, I didn't feel like we were really part of it in some ways. The whole Unconference thing as well didn't entirely work that well because nobody except us who kind of came and did a room. So in my experience of the kind of virtual Unconference, you really need to publicize it like a couple of months before and you need to chivvy people and go, maybe even charge a refundable deposit and get people to get excited about coming and doing their own breakout room. But it's such a nice thing if you can get it to work. So I think maybe if we just start thinking about it a bit sooner, next time there's a big conference, we could get something really cool. Because yeah, like I say, doing a presentation and having a conversation about things brings things out that you didn't expect. So yeah, good and bad, I guess.
Thanks a lot. I mean, this was our first go at it, so in that sense, love and learn. And I think you make very valid points. Anyone else?
Barely speak from a tour holder perspective, what did it meant into any of the breakout rooms? But in the rain room, at the beginning of like the 9:00, 9:00 AM UTC, it was more like there was a people who joined up and just asked about and like talked about AI and probably one somebody's was like interview mode because he had, it felt like he had questions ready to what to ask, but he wasn't really sure, is he in breakout room already? And maybe he assumed that, but eventually it looks like he's kind of understood that and he was more like collecting different answers to questions. So yeah, I don't know, did that like feeling carry over? And because in breakout room, probably were more like interactions or like presentations. Yeah, I, there is no way to probably with Zoom to to kind of breach the gap of what happens in the breakout room and that's kind of unfortunate, but definitely needed role to have somebody to hold it because there was constantly somebody joining in. And then you go through this practice, does he have mic? And then people set it up and then people didn't hear correctly. And then you were able to kind of guide them through this application because it didn't feel like many people actually were using Zoom that much at all. And I wonder, there are few times like later on the stage who were looking for this Hackathon stuff. But yeah, even I didn't realize that there was a second Zoom until somebody said in the Zoom that there is a second Zoom. And maybe I would have seen it before, would have been in the mattermost channel because I think Travis dropped something. Either way, so yeah, I mean, there's possibility of connections and I think somehow did we speak past of us or in a sense of like coordinating the same channel? Yeah, that could be like others because I do feel like it would be much more livelier if the two, these two Zooms would be connected in a sense that that people see each other's work. Right now it felt like two different events are happening. Yeah, I also wondered how these two people who joined in and didn't go to breakout room, like were they people who were not able to speak or write, but wanted to hear something or WhatsApp or? And that, that sounds like a question. And was there like a technical difficulty or some misunderstanding from people who were maybe on a live event? Yeah, but other than that, I did watch the AGI Conference like while I was tour holder and I had time. And the presentation of Haley talking about Unconference and like like this, this stream of getting into this decentralized discussions and then leading up to this potential event. I think that was nicely done and very welcoming.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. I do have some follow-up questions, but Guillermo, you have your hand up. Go for it.
Yeah, yeah, I want to compliment on what the guys were saying, so yeah, and time slot was kind of complicated to follow up, you know, and sync with Istanbul. It was so far away from, not only from Central Europe time, but also for Latam. We were really on the other side of the clock, you know? I really enjoy some of the discussions on the livestream from from the, from all the speakers. The Unconference was really early for us. And yeah, I did want to follow up because Vani shared this talk yesterday and we were talking on Friday. What to do better, what do we see, what we can complement? And I see that also she shares some on the chat, so with Latam, we went with a different account, with our account to have a livestream and done because it was kind of problematic what we saw during the day with the Zoom rooms and all of that. So it was kind of a strategic decision to say, let's keep it independent so we can adapt and we don't have to boss Vani's late at night because we went late in our afternoon. And we did try this livestream. And it was fun. We kind of avoid the format of the Unconference. Not to make it different, but really just to keep everyone on the same room, you know, and have an open discussion. So when we were this, we were going through what we were going to be trying, we, I think we repeat what we did last year with the AGI 24, the roundtable format. So just to make it simple, you know? Don't put us, we were trying this live streaming thing for the first time, so we didn't want to mess it up or have any trolling in our, you know, in our rooms. So we went for the simplest way and we focused on having plural voices. We have people, so Latinos in Miami, representing the Latino community in the Americas. We have people from Colombia and from Argentina. And we did have some people involved in ministries in Colombia, that is one of the first smart cities in Latam. So we have the perspective of AI today in what is the Ministry of Social and Economic Development in Medellin, Colombia, one of the first smart cities, so it was pretty cool. The amount of projects that are being developed in the region. Then we have the president of Argentinean AI community. This is a big, huge community here, also with a rank of ministry. So we need to have a lot of inputs in regards of what regionally countries are doing or how they are planning or using. There was a lot of good insights for the people from Kudos and ASI Cloud, how we, how countries need to be independent with what are their data sets. So the problem is not the prompt, the problem is the information of their citizens, how they custody that, how a bunch of business models kind of pop up in the discussion. So really makes a lot of notes. And some KOLs, so and we did engage with other communities also. We have been working out with our communities, so we invite them with livestream on Twitch. We share that. I was trying to look for the post. So that, the radio of visualizations, not only from a post, that you can have a lot of engagement, it was big, okay? I'm trying to look at right now to see how many many visualizations this livestream had, but it was more than 1,000. So not 1,000 people watching it live, okay, at all, but they zoom up. And yeah, something that we were talking the other day with Bit too, so it sounds like crazy, but Twitch is, there's a lot happening in terms of developers, coding live on Twitch. And we reach out to a lot of people with this initiative we're doing with Latam to get people on board on the ASI Cloud, the AGI Verse, the Meta. So yeah, a lot of the experiment we have, we just have a lot to share with the community and probably how we can reinforce certain strategies. And yeah, reach more people with our stack. Yeah, probably try, try some different things for the next one. Yeah, but it was really, it was really cool. We did have to close it at one point because it was already two hours and I did have to jump off in the car and go and pick up the kid from classes. You know Latinos can speak for hours. I think that's on the, you know, probably a problem too, but it was, it was really fun. Yeah, so yeah.
Yeah, good stuff. It does make me kind of wonder, did we actually end up having two sessions at once? Like when there was two breakout rooms going at the same time?
Yeah, at one point we did, yeah.
Okay, cool. Because I was kind of wondering, like, I don't know, for me personally, it seems a bit of a hurdle for people to first join a Zoom link and then figure out how to click in Zoom, how to get to a breakout room. I think we do lose people there. I'm not sure if that's accurate, but that's, yeah, maybe personal impression.
I don't know. I mean, it shouldn't be that hard and that's why we have somebody hosting the main room. It's like literally just finding a breakout room and picking one. But yeah, obviously it would have been better if we'd had a few different things and more people and blah, blah, blah. So yeah.
Well, yeah, or alternatively, if there's only one session going on, host it in the main room?
Yeah, but that's the Unconference ideal that we were trying to do, wasn't it? It's like you don't know if there's only going to be one and then if you're in the main room, it can be really awkward when people are coming in and they're like in the, you're in mid-session. Whereas you can sort of say to people when they come in, oh, well, there's this and there's this and there's this. Which one do you want to go to?
And like the front room before the event with like, okay, what's happening here? Am I in the right place?
Yeah, exactly.
Is my microphone, can you hear me? And then these like, you don't bring that repetitive operational issue to the actual breakout room.
Yeah, but if you haven't got that many people rocking off and nobody wants to create an impromptu breakout room, then yeah, it does feel a bit superfluous. But to be honest, we learned a few things about the practicalities of doing it, like the fact that the person in the main room needs to be the host and you need a few extra co-hosts in case anybody falls off and has recording problems. So yeah, we, I think if we were to do it again, I'm quite glad that we did it this time with not that many people and not that many rooms, so that we now have learnt.
Yeah, fair. And I do think on your earlier remark for well, better preparing and more having more, more time in advance, I think in a way that that might be an artifact of BGI experience with the physical Unconference because then, well, you have people in the room anyway. So they are there and if there's sessions popping up, they will go there. So that in a way maybe brings a bit more pressure to have these sessions yeah, being spun up. So I think also maybe that, I don't know, maybe it was a bit naive to assume that this would simply also happen online. All right, perhaps let's shift to the Hackathon.
Just one thing I'd like to say quickly is yeah, the event might be over, but it's not finished yet because we've got plans to do all sorts of things with blogs and getting the videos out there. So let's, let's not sort of drop it now just because it's all over, because you need to keep the energy up a little bit. But also thanks to Esther for all her help and support with it all.
Yeah, I just raised my hammer because I wanted to say thank you to all the ambassadors in the Air Ethics Work Group who made it happen because I think that your coordination was really exceptional, especially given the amount of time that you, well, that you didn't have to organize it. I think it was only a few weeks before that we had the budget proof for it. So really excellent work and I'm really looking forward to seeing the recordings when they go up. Are they already up somewhere? If so, where can we find them?
No, they're just in a folder on my drive, but I need to move it to your drive really, to BGI Nexus drive. But the videos are a bit raw, so Video Work Group is kind of tidying them up and making some shorts from them.
Oh, that's super excellent. And I'm very excited by this, this live streaming on Twitch sort of idea. What a great, what a great notion and really interesting that that was piloted. So yeah, I think we learn everything, we learn something every time and it will just get better and better. And I think that it would be really interesting to collaborate more with NEF and see whether the people who took part in the Hackathon would be interested in in coming and taking part next time and just like, you know, just spread the net a bit wider and see and see, you know, as the community grows and as we do more virtual events, there'll be some working groups for BGI Nexus coming up as well and some discussion groups. So kind of pulling the whole thing together will be, will be really amazing and start to start to kind of gather community around the BGI Conference. But yeah, thank you so much. I really, really loved the work that you did and really looking forward to seeing, seeing what happens with the results. And we'll, we'll of course push them on our channels as well to, to share them and to give them some love. And I was really interested in the discussion that was happening in the first session that I was able to go to. So if, if that was representative of the quality of the other sessions, then that's really impressive work. Thank you.
Nice. Thanks for sharing, Esther. Yeah, it's not like I don't necessarily want to push on to the next topic, but seeing you brought up NEF anyway, I think it would be good to have a bit of a check in on the Hackathon side of things. Also noting that for this Town Hall, we also still have the Treasury Insights and I believe Tavvo, you requested?
Ah, we can, I think, skip that then because it's like I have two, one month before the next session. I just wanted to get it over fast as possible. So we can delay it another two weeks and then yeah, see if there is more room there.
As you wish, yeah.
You did get the like update, so maybe something to just shout out is check Treasury Channel. I will drop it again, the call out there. We'll tag everybody and also put the chat in here. Because the more voices you have, the better future we're gonna have regarding reporting, summarizing and maybe. Because this quarter is about a bit, it's not like, not much about maybe automating, but clarifying the process to make it more efficient to do summaries, to do reporting, to do proposals so that our workgroups and our limited amount of time we do sync up, we just don't talk about documentation, but the actual thing and the documentation just happens because we have a process. And that's like the final touch of understanding how well we have done so far or if at all, or is something missing.
Yeah, fair. Thank you. All right, then, well, unless anybody has something to further add on the Unconference, I think we can move to the Hackathon. And I do believe we have some participants in the room, so it would be cool maybe to yeah, hear about it.
I guess I can start a little bit. It was my first Hackathon and it was a good experience for me. I immediately, I guess, attracted a really good team of machine learning researchers who were from Africa. And we had a specific focus on the civic route or the civic option of the four options that we were given to be able to develop from. And it was amazing to learn about the ASI Cloud, kudos. It was just incredible to be able to pull the agents from Agent Verse. I had ASI1. You know, being able to orchestrate which agents would work the best for us. And although we didn't come up with a viable product to actually submit, we're still working on the project and it just was a wonderful experience. Guillermo's example that he gave us of the governance dashboard here at the Ambassador Program was amazing. And I know my team members wanted to look at it over and over and over. They, they were just so happy to have such a great example. And the way that he taught that was just really incredible, engaged people so much information. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to Guillermo.
I love how your dog joins the shout out. Very nice.
Yeah, I feel I could go next. So yeah, I also participated, it was just like an awesome, awesome event, you know? I came home with my team, you know, I tried and found them for, you know? So yeah, it's like go for the AGI. My team wanted going for, yeah, I think the news verification, this, this trade news verification was after, yeah, what's, unfortunately, it was not, not, you know, how do we, should you speak, you know? And you know, it speaks, it's just like, so I was thinking that, okay, so you're saying that it's about code and that it's not, it's not only about code, what about the story you could tell about, you know? And I feel that, okay, if we should go for the AGI memory, I feel it's, there's lots more story we could tell in that part. So my team had like pivot, pivot from the news to come back to the AGI memory. And it was also my team became, became second in that particular stack. So we won second position. Yeah, it was an awesome, awesome experience.
Awesome. And well done. I'm trying to look for the winner's announcement, but I'm failing to locate it, to be honest. If maybe somebody could give me a little pointer where I should be looking, because I'm looking in the
They shared it in the WhatsApp community, in the WhatsApp channel.
Check. Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me get it for you. Yeah, they put it on the WhatsApp channels, but haven't announced it officially. I did check, I did send what Latam built. It's up and running. Pretty cool agent. You guys are gonna like it. Media, news, all involved with a lot of philosophers on the backend to filter and to give a conclusion of Uh, to filter and to give a conclusion of of media and and news. It's connected. So you need to. Click on the search and on the on the agent. If you're using an ASI one, but if not, you you're using it from the. You click uh chat with the agent on the right top on the agent verse. Uh, the whole description is there. Uh. The rating is pretty good now. Uh, I did was having fun yesterday with it, asking about the Argentinian elections that went on on Sunday. Uh, so some Chomsky insights, some uh really cool stuff. Um. But I do can add to the hackathon as a a participator, as a as a judge. So I saw all the projects. Yesterday, Sunday, I spent some hours to go through them. So big shout out to Alfred. Man, that was really cool. I really like it. Uh, the whole thing. Talking with the answers to us. It was really cool, man. Uh, I shared it with Ines. And and we were tripping with it. Uh, we really liked the whole uh concept and. Uh, yeah, and also the the way you guys presented, it was really cool. Uh, also could see it coming from the community, you know, from the ambassadors was 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 really proud for for your stuff. Um. And yeah, then then the other thing that happened is that we met some developers from India. Uh, some teams also from Ethiopia. There was one big project from Ethiopia that I really dig. Uh, and as Colin mentioned, we prepare, they invite us to to do like a technical thing. So I showcased all this the the stack. Uh, we prepared some documents that we shared with with the participants. And there's some cool governance projects coming from the from the hack. Working, functional, okay? Uh, multi-agent with uh. And I think the governance uh presentation we did really triggered some ideas. Uh, so they they so our dash is already old, so they they kind of upgraded, you know. Multi-agent using real legislations from data set from Kenya. So it was really, really cool to see this coming, you know, what it was a five day kind of sprint. Um. Uh, yeah, so it was it was also a good test drive for for what we can do, uh our own hack. Uh, a lot of room for improvement, definitely always. Um, more with all this happening at the same time with the uh with the event in in Istanbul. So it was. It it wasn't an easy one uh to carry out. Um. But yeah, the the quality of the projects, it was it was really cool. Um. So yeah, looking forward to see how we can trigger more of these initiatives. Uh, Fast and Furious Online, uh really cool, cool stuff.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. Um. Yeah, let's see. I I think definitely there needs to be um, at least I didn't speak with uh Neftiti uh since the event ended. Um, but hopefully that won't take too long. Um. For also having a bit of a recap on on, well, what she felt um happened or what maybe didn't happen, because initially we we were having quite some plans on um. You know, this this um exchanging stream and exposing ambassador program to all these hackathon participants and the other way around. Um, I'm just reading up. Oh, Goli, I found up girlfriend.
Hey, um, I was just checking up on WhatsApp and I saw someone suggesting that there might be certificates handed out for participants of the hackathon. So that's good. I also was looking for that graphic that Benny's asking about. I'm still trying to locate it.
I can't quite answer that. Oh, there you go. Uh, there's a copy paste of the winner's announcement in chat. Ah, there's the Latin synapse as well, second place. I was not aware, Guillermo.
Yep, yep. Uh, and uh the error four oh four project, really cool stuff. True North, really cool stuff. Some they 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 get into the stage of a mockup, okay? So we still validate and and rewarded the effort, you know. Uh, some did try Meta, so it's not an easy one, okay? Um. And some integrated Meta in some really cool projects. Uh. So yeah, so also a learning experience. And the Oriki project is the one that Alfred and their team put together. Really cool, really cool. Maverick, also media and validation, we're using Meta language, integrated. But yeah, probably then we should showcase, prepare something that with the links of the project or with the videos uh that the participant. Also, it was a challenge for for all the participants to. At the beginning, we didn't ask for a link with video, but we I kind of pushed it, you know, because so much different time zones. Uh, and also it's sometimes it's easier to find a connection and to do a video, to upload a video that to make a presentation, you know, on a Zoom. Um, and I think that was okay. So we got really cool videos showcasing the things. So probably we should prepare a good uh post. And share it on our socials.
Yeah, absolutely. Um. Yeah, if not, uh, video for sure. We should have a blog post, like you mentioned, uh calling out all the projects and links to to what's being built. All right, um. Yeah, I'll pick up the conversation with uh Neftiti on on that portion of it. Um, actually, after tunnel. Any any further comments or questions? Because now's the time. Um, yeah, so looking at the clock, uh, there's twelve minutes remaining on the slot. Um, I guess we could simply hop to the open topics portion. Um, if there's any.
I did find the, I I'm sorry to interrupt you, Peter. I apologize. My bad. I I did find a finalist of a graphic, so I posted that in the chat.
In Zoom chat or in Discord chat?
In the Zoom chat.
To read the, okay, now I see. I love Zoom file downloading systems. Like you click it, it downloads somewhere. Good luck finding it.
Oh, no, that's terrible.
Oh, it's it's uh surely somewhere, but. Not in recent, uh, I'll I'll find it, but.
Is the beyond the code, the the hackathon thing that the never at is involved in, or where is that coming from? So that is a comment. Okay.
Okay, let's try. It should be screen sharing, I think. Yeah.
Wonder is does Latam need their own logo? Or everything combined? Because if you would take a text away. Ambassador Singularity and then Latam and probably if African Gold has, they all have the same logo. And the ma- marketing thing to think about.
Fair, yeah. Okay, cool. Um, yeah, for sure. Would love to be able to to actually click on this project, um, which this image clearly doesn't support. Um, but yeah, uh, shouldn't be too long before there's um, yeah, exactly, Vanessa, like you put in chat. Um. A bit of description plus links, that would be, that would be great. Um, all right, I'll stop sharing this for now. Um, yeah, actually, good call out. Um, Guillermo on uh ASI chain, uh DefNet was um pushed out uh during uh BGI. Um, earlier today, I think an hour or two ago, also on Singularity on YouTube, um, there's a. Eleven, twelve minute uh video basically of Ben describing the whole uh both the background of ASI chain and uh what the definite entails. And what it doesn't entail. It's basically um, yeah, development phase before um public testnet. So um. My personal expectation is that the uh definite will be relatively short to get like the the very first bigger bugs issues out of the way before moving to a public testnet. And that task net should then be um taking a bit longer. Um. Well, Cadano text tag for AGI in itself is 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 um. I'm really not Ben, so I'm I'm not the one that should be speaking on this. Um, I do know that video I mentioned earlier um starts off with um praise for Cadano. Um. Yeah, I'm not in a position to properly give an explanation why um ASI chain is better for AGI than uh Cadano.
And I still don't know is the hypercycle on and Cardano sidechain just repurposed to their own protocol needs. And if it is, then maybe that's where the confusion comes in.
Well, so. Uh, Hypercycle, first of all, is 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 no longer part of the uh Singularity Net um ecosystem and that that was the initial um was a joint venture. Uh, between Dota and um Singularity Net. I see Haley raising hands, so we're gonna get the full download. The floor is yours.
Uh, can you hear me? Okay, I'm on my phone.
Yes.
I cannot give the full download. I can only give a a couple of perspectives that I have gleaned from from being in the technical meetings. One of the one of the big pieces, there's there's it's not that um ASI chain is better than Cardano for for AI. It just hosts some features that are particularly useful for AI across blockchain. So. For one thing, Meta or Meta IL, which is a a a form of Meta, will be the smart contract language of. Um, of ASI chain. So it enables. One to write a an AI that is a smart contract or a smart contract that is an AI or just a smart contract or just an AI, right? So it provides this interoperability. Um, it enables um. Because Meta IL is grounded in Greg's rogue calculus and graph structured lambda theory. For anybody who may have seen the yellow paper, um, it is able to natively interpret between any programming. Language. So, and that includes smart contract language. I believe it's any programming language, but uh certainly any smart contract language. So you can directly translate, you know, Plutus into solidity. And so you can run cross tra- rock cross chain with extreme ease and fluidity, right? So it's got this massive cross-chain compatibility, which will actually help link everything happening on Cardano to to other chains, right? Because it makes it interoperable with with anything else. And then another key component for AI and um ASI chain compatibility. And as Peter said, Ben definitely said it best, and I'm I'm certain I'm missing out on on chunks of it, is that. When you spin up a shard on ASI chain, you can spin up a sub-network. And you can plug in your own consensus mechanism, as well as reputation system, governance, all these pieces. Which enable you to optimize your shard for your use case. So it's not just for AI, it's also for compute. High-frequency trading, uh data sharing, data management. And it has this really granular control for for sharing and interoperation. You can mount. A shard, you can mount the chain onto your desktop. I've seen this. It's it's so crazy, I can't even describe it. But you can mount the shard onto your desktop, you can drag and drop your files on chain and and manage your tokens on chain like it's a. Like it's a file system and manage your AI as well. And then all the permissioning is completely super native to um. To the ASI chain as well. It's it's super granular, super native. You see, you can um. Give people, give individuals or like like Google Drive, you can give individuals or or. Subgroups access to your files that you dragged and dropped onto your mounted chain. Um, at a granular level, you can tokenize access to that that data, those files, that AI at a super granular level. One use case that I think is very cool that I took away from Greg's descriptions, don't hold me to it, is that. You could actually, you know, spin up a chat agent. Let's say I've got a chat agent that is optimized to tell you about BGI Nexus. Um, and or 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 help you spin up a proposal for BGI Nexus. And I could go on to like a a mastodon, a social network. And I could say, hey, we've got this new agent that will help you spin up an amazing BGI Nexus proposal. You know, the first hundred people to click this button, get tokenized access for, you know, three hours to talk with this agent for free, right? And I'm subsidizing that access and the tokens they use. To give access to that AI natively stored on my ASI chain. And and then, you know, other people that want to use this amazing tool to spin up a an amazing proposal for BGI Nexus can then also pay. Via the shard, it's, you know, like that that's been built into the AI agent as well. So there's just all these kind of. Really fluid native features that derive both from Greg's rolling. For anybody familiar with our chain and the combination of that with Meta IL and then the combination of that. With um um the ability to spin up your own consensus mechanism, right? You can have. You can have high-frequency trading because you can make a chain where the consensus mechanism is uh really fast and enables, you know, it it's it's less. Picky about double spend because you're spending little bit little amounts of money doing arbitrage between trains. Or you can have one where the consensus mechanism and the reputation has to be really high because it's new net shard. And you're doing compute over the shard. So you can set this temperature of 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 these aspects. The way that you want them for for your shard and um then all the shards kind of. Can can collaborate and and participate in the the governance of the overall chain as well. So a couple special features of ASI chain explained as best I can. Hopefully, I've got it all correct. Don't quote me, watch Ben's talk, but that's that's a little bit of my understanding of why ASI chain. It's not, again, it's like. There's nothing wrong with Cardano, it's optimized for what it's optimized for. And we uh enjoy it and. It's smart contract language will be particularly compatible with Meta being a functional programming language. That'll be a a perfect fit. And then this will also help do what the Hydra heads and tails were intended to do, which is to link to other chains and other sub-networks and and other. Other other ways of running on chain on Cardano.
That is the Asia one developer platform where that all is stitched together or.
Yes, yeah, A- ASI ASI chain. Yeah, mm mm Meticycle, also called ASI chain.
Yeah. Yeah, just a. In in Cardano, you can also spin up your own consensus players and do everything on that level, but yeah, the meta language interpreter is probably. Like the uniqueness, I think, that adds to the hmm to to the stuff. And yeah, I guess what you're also mentioning is there is this user interface is made more. Available for community and the developers to use where there is like more of this. You you don't set up nose and sharps in command line, but actually have the visual interface. Where in Cardano, I don't think we have any visual tools. There are just hardcore developers. Punching text into the command line and spinning up stuff.
Um, yeah, for what it's worth in chat, I posted a comment um from Ben, he he put on the ASI Telegram channel, I think about a week ago. Um, with some. Uh, notes, uh, especially clarifying that this is a preliminary document, so it's not like the the actual white paper. Uh, but it does provide quite a bunch of um background on. Everything, ASI chain, um, pretty much. Um. So yeah, it could be interesting to, to check out. Um, yeah, Haley, thanks a ton for that. Um, looking at the clock, we are getting somewhat to the close of, um, the slot. So yeah, I guess let's have a, a, a quick check on the room. Are there any further questions, comments, uh, songs to be added, uh, to today's, uh, tunnel? Funny, go for it.
Just super quickly with Haley mentioning, oh, you could use it to create a brilliant proposal for BGI Nexus. Some people have already done that. So I just wanted to make people aware that quite a few ambassador people have been doing this. And there's some links and I thought I might create a little spreadsheet like people have done before with cat, with, um, catalyst proposals. Just so we're aware of what each other are up to. Um, and I just wondered, is there anybody else who's aware of anybody else who's putting something for the ideation round?
I personally am not, um.
All right. Well, maybe we just share those three links then rather than making a whole spreadsheet, but yeah, we'll see.
The wonder, does Hypercycle then play any role in this? Is I. Chain and stuff or?
Yeah, not really, to be honest. Um, I mean, kind of what, but also last to the dissolving of this, um, joint venture was that. Pretty much the tech wasn't really needed for what we were looking to do. So yeah, that's kind of like, um. No, Hypercycle is, is not involved. Yeah, thanks for sharing that, Fanny. I, I have completely not been able to, to check this yet.
Think if I'm right, Alfred, there, there is more, isn't there? From different people in the ambassador ecosystem.
Yeah, yeah, there are more, um, ideas from the ambassador. Yeah, but I feel these proposals are more like, um, for the ambassador program, you know? Why most of those proposals are like personal proposals to the ambassadors. So I don't know if there are different inputs, but yeah, there are more.
Let's make a spreadsheet. Let's make a spreadsheet anyway, just to make each other aware of what we're all up to.
Okay, okay.
Sometimes still struggling on deep funding to be able to find the, for example, this, this ideation round. Feels it should be two clicks away, really, but I'm not.
I know, I know. I think the site does need some rethinking. It's really hard to find things.
Ideation round is over though now, correct?
Well, submissions are over, but the round isn't over and you should be able to find it much quicker than you can, I think.
Okay, I see the RFP very, uh, ideation button that, that should at least help, but. Then the tagging system or the filters, they. I'm having some issues there.
Check on the last link I put in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at that page, but this, this, uh, shows me 394, um, ideas are open for feedback.
Yeah, because they are all together, all the ideation that started from the beginning of the year. And the next society ideation, they're all on the same.
I think I, I clicked on the three, um, I don't know pillars, whatever, the three types of, um, ideation challenges were eligible. So there's like governance, safety and ethics. And I forget the third one and there's about 247 ideas in there. So there's, there's, there's a lot, governance, safety and ethics. I forget the third. I just can't remember off the top of my head, but that's how I sorted that list.
I see five, ARFPs, governance, open challenge, safety and ethics and social and environmental impact.
You're supposed to put the correct link in the chat.
That, I'm, I'm sure I'm just missing one vital piece of information on where to click. That's.
Yeah, for, for the ideation, I think it's closed already, but the tags for those ideation are, um. Um, social and environmental impact, that is one, governance, that is two, and then safety and ethics, that's three. So those are the three, um, um, tags, three challenge for the BGI ideation. But it's closed already, so no idea comes submitted. Any idea submitted now will be having the open challenge, um, tag.
Okay, got it. So that would mean there's 240 ideas submitted? That's crazy. And good luck to the reviewers there. No. All right, um, I'll have a little play around there. All right, final check on the room before, uh, wrapping up today's session. Um, Milla, apparently it's, um, closed for adding ideas right now. All right, then, uh, let's, uh, close off with a quick reminder on, uh, tomorrow's schedule. We've got education work group at 16 UTC, I hope, um, I will put some, uh, messages to the work group leads as well. Um, then there's R and D guild, that's 19 UTC. You can check that right now, I guess with Giammo. It's 19 UTC, correct?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna follow the, the calendar, okay? You guys changed the, the time now. I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to be in spring, but it's, it's literally snowing in Cordoba, so kind of crazy times.
It's winter time. Just global winter. All right, cool. Yeah, I hope to see you on, uh, one of these sessions tomorrow and if not, uh, we'll speak on Discord. Thanks a lot for being here and sharing your time and lots of insights, good stuff. And yeah, that's it. See you on the next one. Cheers.